Time is now 7:03. I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. Roll call, please.
Six councilors present with Councilor Duncan absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Shall we all stand for the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no special orders of the day. Item four, please.
Four A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a limited vehicle service in the C-2 Neighborhood Commercial District for property located at 2667 Prairie Avenue.
And we'll have a presentation by the one and only birthday person today. She'll get me after that, but Julie Christensen.
This property was previously used as an oil-changing service facility, and it closed in April of 2016. So we're happy to see someone come forward to reuse this building. Proposed car wash will provide hand wash services out of two existing bays and will not be automated. They plan on directing customer vehicles to the back of the building through the existing one-way lane where they will wait until one of the two service bays becomes available, and then customers will wait in the indoor lobby while the vehicles are being cleaned. Once the car wash is complete, the customers will drive through the shared driveway and exit onto Prairie Avenue, and they're estimating two cars can be cleaned and ready in approximately 10 minutes. They share a driveway off Prairie Avenue with an adjacent lot. We've reviewed, staff has reviewed, the traffic, vehicle stacking issues, and there's no problem. Parking, there's not really a change in terms of what's needed for parking and stacking spaces. They haven't proposed any exterior alterations to the building and landscaping, but there are sections of the walls that had wall signs on them, and they're not going to have wall signs, so we do want to require them to paint these unpainted sections. And then we're also requiring some landscape strips. I think Plan Commission always tries to bring these properties more in conformance of code when we have an opportunity. And this went out to the review agents, and the engineering department has noted that all washing and rinsing should be done indoors and drain into the sanitary sewer system. A public hearing was held at the Plan Commission meeting, and no one had any comments or concerns, and it was recommended for approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in your resolution. Washing and rinsing shall be done indoors and drain into the sanitary sewer system. Sections of exterior walls shall be painted to match existing where wall signs were removed by June 1st of 2018. A landscaping strip shall be installed between the front paved area and Prairie Avenue by June 1st, 2018. Repairs shall be made to the pavement markings and to the damaged sections of the parking lot by June 1st, 2018. The applicant shall obtain an architecture review certificate and a building permit prior to beginning any alterations to the building, signage, or landscaping, and your standard condition of major changes coming back. So this public process and minor changes are able to be done administratively, and this is on your agenda for a public hearing and action tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open a public hearing for item 4A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record. Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion from council. There's a motion by Blakely, second by DeForest. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion pass. Item five is public comments. We have reached the point at the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any request this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act or request at a future meeting, or we may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid from making personal attacks. We do have three individuals that filled out sheets to speak this evening. If there's anyone else that would be willing to speak on public comments, this would be your opportunity. The first person is Nick Hamilton. If you can come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nick Hamilton. I reside at 805 East Azalea in the town of Beloit, and I am here to speak on behalf of Tracy Bliss, who resides at 2210 James Kelly Lane in Beloit regarding the logo. And she gave me some books. Do I hand these to you?
Yep.
Like I said, I'm here to speak on Tracy Bliss' behalf.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to read what she has a statement prepared here. "I'm sorry I couldn't be there today. I've had a family vacation planned since before Thanksgiving, but I'm passionate about this issue and want to present the following. With the survey made public to vote on two logo options, we could choose one, but there was no option to say, 'I choose neither, and here's why.' What's unsettling is that neither of these options are what was voted, and but the council repeats that they received input from a thousand-plus people. If this input included the hundreds of negative comments that were made, the new logo would not have been voted in. You can find these negative comments in the handouts. I heard at the last council meeting that the bridge concept is to represent a community that builds bridges and is unified by them. This sounds great, but it's not a bridge representing a community that builds bridges. It's an arch that you walk under to enter a park. What I ask random people, what this landmark is, what this landmark is in Beloit, the common response is the Hendrix Bridge, also noted in your handouts. At the last meeting, I heard it's a logo we can live with, and it may not be perfect, but I feel that we don't have to be perfect. It's not just a logo to those who take pride in living in this liberal arts-focused community, and you can make this process transparent to the public, and we absolutely should not settle for less than perfect. You mentioned a workshop was offered to the public. We could only find one Facebook post the day of the workshop that mentions it, but it did not state it was open to the public, and it only received one share. Poor planning and advertising explains why you only had one citizen at the workshop. I also heard at the last meeting, we do have five or six logos that are floating out there, so I ask why add another mediocre seventh? Three councilors mentioned we may want to revisit, one suggested in two years, which would add an eighth logo. Please stop adding logos. Give local artists a chance to design a respectable logo that can be used for years ahead or leave what's in place. I've included my designs and other artists' designs in your handouts, so you can get a small glimpse of the possibilities. This feels extremely rushed just to get it done and move on. It will cost thousands of dollars to apply this new logo throughout the city, so based on the community's feedback that I've gathered and the designs that I'm presenting in your handouts, I'm asking that the council take the logo more seriously and reopen the vote. Leave the city logo as is and revisit the project later and open it up to local artists."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Hamilton?
I'm speaking on behalf of Matthew Bliss, which is Tracy's husband.
And if I can just get your name and address for the record.
Danielle Hamilton, and my address is 805 East Azalea.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need his address?
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. And I'll read what he had. "As I stand before you, the city council of Beloit, I would like to remind you that you both, or that you represent the citizens of the city and their voice as elected officials. I believe the newly voted-in logo does not accurately represent the city of Beloit and should be reopened for other refreshing ideas that local artists bring to the table. The city of Beloit should not settle for less than what we are and revisit in a few years. How many major corporations rebrand their company's logo every two years?" None. "Would you want to have a logo that represents every, excuse me, you want to have a logo that represents everything positive about Beloit, leaving a lasting impression on visitors and making citizens proud to be from this great city? As the council, or, as the council and city manager, the logo of the city means everything, just like a two-year-old driving down the street sees the golden arches and knows that that's McDonald's. Let's leave a long-lasting impression by reopening the logo and selecting the best logo for this great city, which I am proud to call home, Matthew."
Thank you. Sarah Miller?
My name is Sarah Miller. Excuse me. I reside at 3221 Riverside Drive. I also would like to just hopefully grab your attention about the logo. I'm sure that you're all probably a little bit sick of the issue. I understand that it's been going on for months, so I appreciate the few minutes. Just to echo what the statements were read on behalf of Tracy and Matthew, I think that it is a very important issue, the logo. I know that logo and design and brand recognition isn't everyone's cup of tea. It's not, it's not everyone's specialty. Tracy happens to be a graphic designer. I also am in the marketing and design field, and based on the support that she has gotten on the Facebook page she created from hundreds of local citizens, I think that it's very important to a lot of our other city members as well. I agree that, I don't think statements like, "We can live with it, and it's not perfect, but we don't need to be perfect." I don't, with all due respect, think that those are great statements to make on the behalf of your citizens. I think we should be trying to do the best. I understand that it may not be your top priority, that there are more pressing issues in this city to deal with, but then maybe what we should do is we should table it, say that we're going to revisit it later, rather than, as has been said, add a seventh logo to the mix that nobody's really happy with, that you're going to have to revisit again later anyway. And then the thousands of dollars it's going to cost to implement across the city, on all of the city trucks and all of the logoed apparel and all of the signage. I don't think that we should spend the money to do that with a logo that doesn't seem to be representative of the town. It's not a bridge, and frankly, the design itself isn't great design. It's unbalanced. The money not being spent here locally also seems to be a sticking point with a lot of the residents. I understand that there was a city of Beloit resident involved somehow in the process, but the money was spent with a Madison firm, and I don't think people are very happy about that as well. So I would respectfully ask to reopen the vote at a later time and revisit this issue later, and then maybe have better communication regarding workshops and having it open to local artists.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under citizen public comments this evening? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I have a handout too as well.
My name is Matt Nimitz, and I reside at 2614 South High Crest Road, Beloit, Wisconsin. A lot has changed in Beloit since the 90s. Old buildings have been renovated, new buildings have been constructed, and bridges have been rebuilt stronger. Meanwhile, the one thing that's remained the same is the Flying B logo. There have been attempts made within the past few years to update the logo, like we've updated our city, mainly to result in large amounts of money outsourced out of Beloit and some distressed community members. Still, we haven't found an individual cohesive logo that fits our great city. At the last city council meeting, there were strides taken, attempted to make that change. A logo was voted on that many people found confusing somewhat and agree does not represent the city of Beloit and its ability. The city takes pride in its nationally recognized film festivals and creativity. It's home to a respected liberal arts college and has a desire for entrepreneurial spirit. It makes sense that the local talent should have been and should be utilized to create a visual identity and branding materials for our diverse and proud city. I urge that the voting is also reopened to allow for local design submissions for a set period of time. There could be a contest that's held to allow for more appealing and alternatives to be submitted. Once results are gathered and minimized, then the logo could be voted on again later. This should be done before more taxpayer money is spent on rebranding and signage. There was a lot of time, thought, and effort put forth willingly by local designers, concerned citizens, to find the best solution. The logo design workshop wasn't advertised as well as it could have been, which makes sense that there wasn't a significant turnout, and a logo isn't a one-time thing. Besides the great people in the city, our logo is a visual representation of the city that we call home, and it's only right that more time is allotted for an important city to the symbol, or an important symbol to the city. So I hope that the effort's been put in, that the facts that have been presented will help you in the decision to stay local for the project.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment this evening? Evening.
My name is Shirley Williams, and I reside at 2170 Hayfield Lane. I want to first thank the city council members for allowing me to have the opportunity to express my opinion of the logo. I contacted all of you, and I did hear back from four of you directly, and I do appreciate your efforts in doing that. The three who did not contact me, because I called on May the 26th, which is exactly 10 days from today, I do hope that in the future, you will take the time to at least give a phone call to the citizens of this city who take the time to call you about an issue, whether you agree or not, because everyone didn't agree with my opinion, but they did make a phone call back. I concur with the people, at least last two people that I heard, that you should revisit the logo. I'm not asking you to reopen it and make a decision about whether there should be another workshop or whether there should not be another logo. As I stated, I think the timeframe was too short for notification about exactly what was occurring. Obviously, if you had one person attend a workshop out of the 37,000 almost residents here, something's wrong with the communication. I would ask you to keep the current logo, which has been around, I know, for like three decades. I think it would be a cost-saving, because you would not have to recreate and spend more money recreating the different logos that are around the city with this new implementation. And you'd already expressed that you'd be willing to wait for, you know, like two years or so and reopen this issue. I would ask that you take your power, say, "Okay, we're going to use the Flying B as our official logo. Have all of the departments actually change and use that logo, if you're insisting that we need one logo," and revisit the issue in the future, whether it's two years, five years, whatever you decide. But it's obvious that there's a lot of distress in the community about the current logo that you decided on two weeks ago. So please, please, open your minds and reconsider doing something different for the citizens of Beloit. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Third and final call, anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public comment portion and thank everyone who stepped forward to give us your comments tonight. It was greatly appreciated. Moving on to item six, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be enacted under one motion unless there's a council that would like anything removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. Is there anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6F. Is there a motion for approval? Is motion by Press Show there? Second by DeForest. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item passes. Item seven, licenses, please.
Item 7A is a resolution approving the renewal of alcohol beverage licenses for the license period beginning July 1st of 2017 through June 30th, 2018. What you have before you, councilors, is your annual renewal list. Within that list is approximately 90 licenses who have applied for renewals. Gone through the, this is approved by you, we will go ahead and process the licenses to be distributed prior to June 30th, so that they can be properly posted and checked by the police department for proper posting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of alcohol beverage licenses for license periods July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018?
I refer to plan.
Refer to plan, I'm sorry.
No.
No, it's approval.
These are the ones to approve. These came before you for referral in May.
The next one is refer.
Right, the next one is refer to plan.
Yeah, so that's okay. No, that's okay. There's been motion by Press Show. Is there a second? Second by Blakely. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item 7A, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item 7A passes. 7B, please.
Item 7B are applications for late renewal of alcohol beverage license, licenses for license period beginning July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. This is a referral to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee. These are applications that came in after the April 15th deadline and then therefore were required to pay a late fee and come before you. They'll come back June 19th after the ABLCC meets.
Okay. Is there a motion to refer to plan?
I'll move to refer to the ABLCC.
Motion by DeForest. Is there a second? Second by Anderson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of referring item 7B, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, 7B passes. Item 7C, please.
7C is an application for a new Class B beer and Class C wine license for Fresco La Casa de las Fajitas LLC. They're doing business as Fresco Fajita House, located at 315 State Street. Jennifer Dominguez, agent for the license period beginning July 1, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, and this is also a referral to the ABLCC, and we'll come back to you for recommendation of approval June 19th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to refer?
I so move.
Motion by Press Show, everybody. All the, right. The second is Press Show. All those in favor of referring, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it's referred. Thank you.
I'm just really happy.
Hey, that's, hey, I can tell. Item eight, ordinances, please.
8A is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from R1A Single Family Residential District to C3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 3375 Prairie Avenue. This is second reading.
Julie Christensen, please.
This is a vacant two-acre parcel along Prairie Avenue, located immediately north of the YMCA sports complex. The applicant has an accepted offer to purchase for the property. The city's comprehensive future land use plan does recommend planned mixed uses and identifies the subject property as the northern limit of the Prairie Avenue Planned Mixed Use District, so it is consistent with our comp plan. There, the applicant may be submitting a, if it is approved. The applicant may be submitting a separate request for a convenience store with a drive-through component. Drive-through uses would require conditional use in all commercial districts. They're not a site planner or in any architectural rendings at this time, otherwise we would have included them in your packet. If the site is developed, a landscape offer would be required between the subject property and the adjacent residential parcels. Plan Commission did review this item on May 3rd and voted unanimously to recommend approval. At your last meeting, you held a public hearing and had the first reading. Included in your packet are two letters for residents who live on Walton Lane, expressing concern about allowing this property to be developed commercially. And it is on your item, on your agenda for action tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Let's get a motion and a second at least to start the discussion, please. Motion by Anderson. Is there a second? Second by DeForest. Council discussion. Okay, now, let me, give you a little secret here. The names have been erased, so when you turn your button on, it's all, okay, you're on. Counselor DeForest. So when you want to speak this evening, I'm going to need you to hit your button, and then I'll get to you once I synchronize and see where you're at. Go ahead, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would just like to express my opinion that of the four residential property owners that were noticed about this, we heard from two, and to me, that's a pretty convincing, compelling argument that the residents who live in this area do not want to see this development, and so I would like to see us honor their request. There's a reason why we have comprehensive plans, so that residents can have an expectation of what kind of development will occur in the area where they purchase their homes. And when people who have purchased their homes in this area have said, "Okay, I'm not in favor of this development. It wasn't zoned this way, and I don't want to see this kind of development," I think we should honor that as a council. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, hit your button. You gotta hit your button again.
I have a question. You said it was part of the developmental plan to be able to have a commercial entity there?
Yeah, this is the northern limit of what was the Prairie Avenue Planned Mixed Use District, and so this property was recommended for planned mixed uses, which is why we were, staff recommended approval, because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, but I have to say, Sheila, you said that they didn't think that this would be used in any way, or that the people who bought their home here, because that's really a difference.
Counselor DeForest.
Yes, but the fact that we're having to rezone it from single-family residential to C3 Community Commercial District, that is a change. So the reason why it has to come before us is because it hasn't been zoned for this particular development in this way.
Anything else, Counselor, for rec?
No.
Counselor Press Show.
I guess it would be useful, when we're referring to our zoning maps, to have a copy of them handy to look at, since I don't think any of us have seen that comprehensive plan zoning.
The zoning is reflected on here.
The comprehensive zoning.
It's in the packet.
Everything in the packet. Your comprehensive plan isn't on here, but the zoning is on here.
That's okay. That's what I'm looking for, to show.
Want to turn your, hit your mic back on.
That's why I was looking forward to see how the comprehensive plan lays out, and because it is on the fringe of it, to see how that lays out in relation to the rest of the comprehensive plan. Since that's not here for a reference, it's hard to make a judgment.
Essentially, this is the northern edge, so it goes all the way down.
And how far to the east and west?
It, it doesn't go west, because it's, I don't think, because it's in the town.
Oh, that's, that's town.
Actually, I believe it's on both sides all the way down, because part of the strategies is to try to work with the town of Beloit to have a consistent signage as part of that district.
And it is commercial across the street on Prairie. Down, no, just, just next to it, just kitty corner road. So, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So this is one of those, I don't know if you've ever looked at the comprehensive plan, but there's a, there's a section of it that we did, a little concept, plans of how they could be laid out, and for Prairie Avenue, there's a Prairie Avenue Planned Mixed Use with the intention, which we haven't ever done this. We had some discussions several years ago of working with the town to try to curva, create some kind of common standards to try to have it be a district and not so that for your average person, they can't, because most people don't know where, what city, what's town, to try to have a kind of a consistent signage, you know, development. And this is the north edge, so when you go north of there, that's where it would stop, is that, is that Walton. So that's what the comprehensive plan showed back in '08.
But if you're looking at the, at the strip of Prairie south of here to this point, you're looking at almost entirely commercial development, as I recall, and that's what I was hoping, I just, I'll pull it up off the internet sometime in the future, but just to see if there, you know, if there's any, any reasonable argument to be made that we couldn't have seen this coming, and I don't think that's really a reasonable argument or, you know, or rational, you know, that this has been seen in the past and planned for in the past, and it's been coming for some time, and this is just a continuation of that, so.
And if council wants to see the comprehensive plan maps and future packets, I mean, we can include that, but.
I could look it up, too. That's, I'm just thinking for reference, it'd be, you know, nice to have that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5, 1. Item 9, appointment. Item nine, appointments, we don't have any appointments this evening. Item ten, council activities and upcoming events, Counselor Foreback, please.
Well, I was really proud to be able to go to so many nice events since our last meeting. The wonderful Friday's lunch in downtown, I can just walk down to it, and they were so good, there were hundreds of people there to see our great high school jazz band perform. And then the twosome who played last Friday was also, to me, surprisingly really good. So if you've never come, it's a joy to come and have lunch and sit around and have really great music played for you during the lunch hour. Then I also was pleased to be able to attend the new Hendrix Hospital opening, and my husband and I left there and immediately went down to the Rotary River Center where they were having the opening of the Great River Walk, River, what do you call it?
River Trail.
River Trail, okay. And just a personal note, years ago, when I was at the Chamber of Commerce, I was able to attend one of the first meetings when people were starting to talk about this, and do you know the hundreds of hours of volunteer work that went into creating a great resource that connects us? I mean, it's two states and it's all our counties, and when I was little growing up in Beloit, we had a song that went, "Oh, Beloit, oh, Beloit, how you make me shiver with your nice clean streets and your dirty Rock River." But I don't know if the rest of you ever heard that, but lord knows, it sure isn't true now, so sometimes we just have to say, "Thank you," it's a wonderful asset.
Counsel Presso, tap that.
That's gonna be tough, because, that, that's great, because I am old enough to remember the Dirty Rock River and skiing through, you know, piles of foam. Anyway, we won't talk about that, it's really nice.
Too late.
Thank everybody. But, but one of the things I was gonna mention was the Rock Trail Initiative, and then coming up here in two weeks on the fifteenth and the seventeenth. But the fifteenth is the first, is a, is a thing at the Confluence Center down here just south of us, in South Beloit, that's gonna be opening up, and that's, that's part of that trail initiative kind of thing, it's anchoring the Turtle, the Turtle Creek Greenway and then South Beloit and the city of Beloit into where we all started, where the whole city of Beloit. The reason we're here is the Confluence sitting down here south of us, about a couple blocks. And that's why we're all here today, because there was a confluence between the Rock and the Turtle. And so that's coming together and being revitalized, so coming up on the fifteenth, I believe, at five o'clock, there's an open house for the Confluence Center. And coming up tomorrow night is a grouping, is a gathering of photographers there to kind of get an early bird look and organize some photographic things that we can do from adventures that way. Coming up on the agenda next week is the Welty Environmental Center's Streams and Stream Monitoring Training at the Welty Center, Big Hill Center, Big Hill Park next Tuesday, so that's something to look forward to. And again, it's all about the water, it's all about the river, so that's pretty cool. And today, we, we again celebrated what it took to put that trail, that national trail together, it took marking canoe portages and marking takeouts and campgrounds and arranging some of those things when they didn't exist, so you could make a full, a full travel across, from Horicon all the way to the Mississippi. So, it's pretty amazing to see that come together. So, and starting this week on Friday is Music at Harry's, the first one for the season, so I can't remember who's playing, but it'll, should be nice, the weather looks like it's gonna hold off, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, please.
Thank you. It's been a while since we had a meeting, but you know, a lot of stuff's happened, obviously. One of the things was a Beloit native was actually pitching against Beloit Snappers recently, Cam Regner, you know, he's a class of two thousand eleven graduate, and he got drafted by Milwaukee, and now he's pitching against Beloit, so that was definitely a great thing to see, it's always nice to see Beloit residents have success. Also, on that same night, I attended the Vets Roll Homecoming. I don't know how many of you've attended that, but I would strongly suggest you do, it's, it's really just something special to see all these veterans come back and get a really good welcome home from a nice trip out in DC. Also, something else coming up this weekend is the high school graduation. Congratulations to class of two thousand seventeen, you know, it's a, it feels like it was just a couple months ago that I graduated, so it's nice to see, you know, the new crop of kids finishing high school and moving on to the next stage of life.
Really, you had to say that just a couple of months ago?
I had to tell the, I have to brag. It's a long time ago.
Counsel Blakely.
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending an urban revitalization hearing, listening session, held at Beloit Public Library last week. It sounds deadly dull, you know, I hate titles like that that go on forever. However, this was pretty exciting. We had six legislators, state legislators, who were very, very interested in hearing what is going on in Beloit, and I think I saw a growing respect on their faces and heard it in their comments, as various groups from, mostly from Beloit, some from Rock County, spoke up about all the positive changes and the challenges that we're working on here. So I really saw smiles growing on their faces, and they were a little taken aback, having started the meeting by saying, "Now, don't be shy, come up to the microphone," and then realizing that we in Beloit are articulate and passionate, and one of the people in our audience, Rose Richard, was there as one of these very articulate speakers that night, talking about urban gardening in our city. So it was really worthwhile, and I thank Beloit Public Library for hosting that event. And then this evening, I and Mark Presso had the pleasure of stopping by Austin's Barber Shop on State Street for their one hundredth anniversary of continuous hair cutting in our city. So if you're gonna be in there anytime soon to have your hair cut, and Rod said that he could even trim my mop if I wanted to stop by sometime, be sure and say happy anniversary to him, because that store has given a lot to the community over many, many years.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Well, a lot of my thunder has. Hit your button.
Thank you, a lot of my thunder has been stolen. I won't speak to the other activities that I was able to participate in that my fellow counselors have already mentioned, except I really, I really have to talk about the Rock River Trail. This means so much to me. This started in two thousand and eleven, so it has been six years that a small group of us have worked our butts off to get that federal designation for the Rock River as a national water trail. And a lot of people might not realize what that means. Some of the, some of the importance of it is that it really does serve as a further reinforcement of our bridging of so many communities. There are forty-one communities that touch the Rock River from the Horicon Marsh down to the Mississippi, and I had to reach out to all of those forty-one communities and get all of the elected officials in all those communities on board for this designation. The National Park Service requires that every municipality that touches that natural resource has to be in agreement with the plan. So I think that speaks a lot to how all the communities that touch the Rock River, how they feel about this precious resource, that they were willing to get on board and say, yes, this is an asset, a resource that we care about. It took two state legislators, legislatures to get on board as well, so we had to get both Wisconsin and Illinois state legislatures to agree to endorse the designation and what it entailed. And it might sound like it was an easy thing to do, but part of that application required that these communities would be committed to enhancing and improving water quality, and that they would have to be committed to dam safety and portage safety, which takes money, that takes resources, so communities had to say, yes, we will invest in dam safety and portage safety. We had to assess every single dam and every single portage site along the entire stretch of the Rock River, and there were about ten of us who did this. So it was quite a labor of love, and what's further gonna come from it, which I'm really excited about, is with the federal designation, we will now have access to federal grant funds that all of the communities along the Rock can use to further improve water quality and further improve its navigability. So it really is an incredible thing. There aren't that many national water trails in the country, and so for the Rock River to have this designation is very special. So I, I just want to make sure the community understands what a significant milestone this is for our community to really celebrate. I love, love, love that Beloit is the exact halfway point of the Rock River. How cool is that? Yes, we are the midpoint of the river, we are the midpoint of Wisconsin and Illinois, and I just love how it further reinforces this notion that we bring people together, that we come together, and it's such a special thing. I just, I have to acknowledge two individuals that worked very, very hard who have passed away. It took us so long that we lost two people who worked with us on this, and that would be Frank Shear, who really was the one that had this inspiration to make this happen, and then convinced a bunch of us who were crazy to get on board to help him with it, and Dave Schreiber. Both individuals worked tirelessly, you know, we all did this as volunteers to get this designation. The application to the National Park Service was two hundred pages and included many, many, many maps and tables that we had to develop, and Dave Schreiber with his technology expertise was instrumental in doing that for us. So I just, I just hope the community feels some pride when they drive down the street or they go along the river and they see one of those signs that says, "National Water Trail" or "National Historic Scenic Route," to understand what that means and how special that really is. So I just wanted to take the time to share that, so, sorry if it was too long, but it was six years in the making. I do want to share an upcoming event, Sun Valley is having their Strawberry Fest. Yes! It's June seventeenth, and I look forward to this every year. I love Sun Valley for doing this, because it's a really popular west side activity, and we need more activities on the west side of our city. I really appreciate that they work so hard to pull this off, and what's beautiful about it is, they donate the proceeds to local charities. They donate to Caritas and to the Domestic Violence Survivor Center and to Hands of Faith, so they just take the money and put it right back in the community, so I love Sun Valley for doing that. And again, it's June seventeenth, best crepes you've ever had in your life, I swear, so please come have some strawberry crepes or pancakes there. And I think Kevin is gonna talk about the summer meal kickoff, so I'll leave it off at that.
Thank you. Before we do that, I want to thank everyone that had anything to do with the parade. It was a wonderful time, got my exercise, Sheila, so, actually had to walk to South Beloit and then turn around and walk back to my car, so I think I did pretty good that day. That's always a great event, to see all the people come out, all the children come out, I want to thank Regina Duncan, who took it apart herself to buy candy for the counselors to pass out, and I don't know if Sherry was assisted as well, and Clint assisted in that, but we had candy this year to pass out, and Sherry kept getting lost, we kept looking back, she was like back mingling with people, and.
That's because I was handing out.
She was handing out, I told her, I said, the ideal is to throw the candy, not hand it to any visiting person along the parade route, but she, yeah, but we had a great time, and what I like about the parade is, we get to talk to each other outside of the chambers and really get to see what each of us likes, what we don't like, not about city stuff, we don't talk about city stuff, but we actually get to know one another as we're walking that route, so it's always exciting and encouraging, and I enjoy it very much. And then you always have people yelling at you from the sidelines, you know, hi, how you doing? So you never get to see everybody, so you just spend a lot of time waving. So I just want to congratulate and thank everyone who had anything to do with that. The other thing that Sheila mentioned is the summer food kickoff, there's gonna be an event on June fourteenth at Beloit Memorial High School. Now, what this is, is for in the summertime, whether people believe it or not, there are individuals that often wondering where their next meal is gonna come from. So right now, we have students that's in school, they're getting breakfast and lunch, but usually around this time of year, if you work in schools, you can see kind of their attitudes change a little bit, and a lot of that may have to do with when school gets out, they may not know where they're gonna get breakfast or lunch from. So there are gonna be several locations in Beloit, around the city, that students can go to and get breakfast and lunch. If you're eighteen or under, you can go get free breakfast or lunch. The list is exhaustive, so what I'm going to do is email it to the city manager and see if we can get it on the city's website, I know it's on the school district's website. The number that you can call is six zero eight, three six one, three four four six, to get information, where the locations are, you can get a flyer, there are flyers around the city, but if you need information, six zero eight, three six one, three four four six. And I've asked Counselor DeForest if she would kind of just translate that into Spanish for us, this little announcement, so we're getting every segment of the community, because truly, this is very important. One thing we, I, I value is our youth, and I can't express it enough, and I know Counselor DeForest had mentioned before, there's a lot of kids that just don't know where their next meal is coming from, so this is an opportunity, we want to get the word out everywhere we can, so if you need a flyer for your church, any place that you know where we can reach kids, it's gonna be very advantageous to give this to them, so thank you.
Do you, do you have the?
Yeah, I'll email it, yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, was there a Dairy Ripple halfway back to your car? Because there wasn't, and when I walked it.
It was, but I didn't stop, I didn't stop.
Well, I, yeah, I don't wanna, because my Spanish isn't fluent enough that I don't wanna.
If you want to just give the number, if you want to just give a phone number, where they can call.
I guess I would like to just let everyone know that the flyer itself, it's not here, is available in Spanish as well, and you can contact, if you're doing it, I lost the page, what page was it? On behalf, if you're doing it on behalf of families or other organizations, the flyer is available, it's one side English, one side Spanish.
She just messed me up, just totally messed me up here.
Did you do that on purpose?
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, so I guess the bottom line is, you can contact the school district of Beloit, and they will make sure to hook you up, and most community agencies that are serving people, they, they're familiar with the program. But again, it's free meals for kids, no questions asked, they don't have to show any ID, they don't have to bring anything with them, they just show up and they get free lunch, and there are about fifteen sites all across the city, so if you could just help spread the word.
Okay.
We'll leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you. Item eleven, city manager's presentation, we have eleven A, Beloit Public Library, for the Summer Library Club Events, we have Mike and Megan here to present.
Oh, hi, I'm Michael DeVries, I'm head of adult services at the Beloit Public Library.
Hi, I'm Megan Miller, and I am an employee at Youth Services at the Beloit Public Library. Thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so our summer, Summer Library Club is kicking off here this weekend, June tenth, from one to three PM for both children, adult, teens, all ages kind of event. We are having a diaper drive to benefit Caritas of Beloit, basically bring a package of unopened diapers, please unopened diapers, and you will get a dollar off in library fines. And both of us still have children in diapers, so we know that diapers are not cheap, so we'll help out as much as we can. And we were talking earlier, too, we might try to continue this all summer, to collect diapers all summer as well for Caritas. As far as the adult and teen side goes, during our kickoff event, we're gonna have some video games, board games out for people to play, and just kind of have a good time. Events for, I'm sorry, I'm so used to moving, events for adults, kind of what we kind of do during the summer, just a little bit geared towards the program idea a little bit, so we're gonna still have fable film nights, and now we have great movie musicals, something that has been added recently. I do have handouts, if y'all want them. them. Everybody else needs to come to the library to get them. So, um, we do have movies, and they are very well attended. There's popcorn, all kinds of good stuff going on with that. So please come. We also have a State Line Genealogy Club that'll be meeting. And y'all can read book discussions, crafters' noons. Basically, there's a crafting project one Saturday a month for people to have a chance to try their hand at that. We will have two authors coming out this summer, one coming out here shortly. Um, Dan, and I'm going to mess up his name, Clefstad, is coming June 8th, so this week at 6:00 PM. And then we also will have Jerry Apps coming 1st of August. Basically, he's not coming so much as we're watching a movie and then we're going to Skype with him. So kind of going to be there. And we also have aromatherapy, help and healing for both teens and adults to give you a break. Just stop moving. Teen events. The Battle of the Books is once again being hosted at the Beloit Public Library. Um, we now have two teams for the Beloit Public Library, so yay. Um, if you have any children, and I say children, basically 12 to 15-year-olds or so that are interested in forming a team, we can always have more teams. So we'd encourage that. Basically, they read about six books and they have a little competition with other libraries. And we didn't win last year, so it'd be nice to win this year. Um, we have a gaming club, which is really popular for teens, paperback book club, um, Teen Writers' Workshop. Y'all may know the person hosting it as Sherry. I'll have the notebooks for the next meeting. Um, and we also have several drop-in programs as we go during the summer that aren't on the schedule that are just kind of happening. So I think that's... The last, the last part of it's actually the reading part. Um, when you do sign up, you'll get a reading log. Basically, read a book, get an entry, have a chance to win some prizes all summer long. Um, so we do encourage you to read. We also encourage you, if you listen to audiobooks, that's also counting, or if you watch movies, that is also counting. And I think that's...
Okay. Thanks, Mike. So now I'm going to be completely inept with this device here because we're going to play a video, and I'm going to introduce, uh, Jenny Schaumber here, um, in spirit to talk to you about, um, Beloit Elementary School. So thanks for pulling the trigger on that for us. We're good. Oh, no, that's so sad. Well, we'll have to bring her back in person. That's what she gets for trying to sneak out, right? But I will continue ahead if that's okay and get really excited with you about Saturday, June 10th from 1:00 to 3:00. You should totally come and sign up. Here, I'm going to sneak back one. Okay, so Saturday, June 10th from 1:00 to 3:00, you should come and sign up for our, uh, Summer Reading Club. It's going to be super fun. Um, we've got some amazing prizes. We've added an additional challenge to be a super reader this summer, and you could possibly, your child could possibly get their, uh, photograph hung on the wall, which is super fancy and exciting. So you should come. There's going to be activities and crafts and frozen custard from Culver's. So it's a win for everybody. So after June 10th throughout the summer, on Tuesdays, we'll have Tales and Treats. Wednesday, you can join us for Discovery Story Times. Um, I don't know that we mentioned, but our Summer Library theme is Build a Better World. So a lot of our programming is going to have to do with like STEM and like environmentalism and just like really interesting, engaging stuff. I'm personally very excited about it, and I'm a grown-up. So Wednesday, tween times are always a good time. There is, of course, Family Fun Days. And then, like we mentioned earlier, on the Summer Library Club, there's prizes and recognition and all kinds of great opportunities for all of us to get together at the library and build a better world. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the great programming.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Council Blakely.
Could you say a little more, if you know about...
Want to turn your mic on first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm supposed to turn my mic on.
You're right.
Come on.
Don't worry about being mechanically not-minded.
So, yeah, Wednesday, tween times.
Wednesday, tween times.
So I know that they're really well-planned.
Thank you.
And you know what? There's some mystery because we want you to come and check it out and get, you know, get involved. So...
Oh, right. Great.
Where are they at? Let's just...
Um, they're in the afternoon, right?
Yeah, I'm not...
We are the worst. We're pretty sure they're in the after, um, they're afternoon programs. So, you know, like oneish-twoish. But you can tell, you should come to the library, though, and grab one of our program catalogs.
Is it online? The catalog online? Is it online?
Probably. It's, I'm sure it's, if you go to the youth...
It's on the calendar online.
Yeah.
So the calendar will have the times and all that as well.
Great.
Yep. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I will add, we are one of the places for the meals thing, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the end of the summer. And y'all could just call us as well. If y'all have questions, we can answer.
Okay.
Y'all can call us as well.
Okay.
If you have questions.
Yeah, the library's a meal site, so you could get your free meal and check out a book. How cool is that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, City Manager's Presentation.
11B is a fireworks safety presentation with Chief Liggett and Chief Zabolski.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
My fellow citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to present some information, uh, our annual review of the, the fireworks ordinance and, um, the, uh, things that are legal and not legal, and then also cover some safety tips for those that do choose to enjoy some consumer fireworks on the Fourth of July. Uh, just a reminder of what's legal in Beloit. If, uh, it's easier to just kind of go over what's not legal. If it goes up in the air, blows up, or shoots a flaming ball, or makes a screaming sound, those are not legal in, in the state of Wisconsin for use. So, um, if you have something that moves across the ground, um, a sparkler, a fountain, a smoke bomb, a snake, a snap, um, those are all things that are legal in the city of Beloit and in the state of Wisconsin for use. Now, let's talk about being a good neighbor. Uh, that's probably the most important piece for us. As you can imagine, uh, we receive in the city of Beloit quite a few fireworks complaints over the Fourth of July, uh, and the days preceding the Fourth of July. Um, now, uh, it's not Chief Zabolski's goal or my goal to thwart the patriotic efforts of our citizens and enjoying this wonderful holiday and celebrating our independence. However, we want folks to be safe. Um, what I'm asking is that we respect our neighbors and understand that if you're shooting off fireworks, uh, don't do it at all hours of the night. Don't do it at 3:00 in the morning. You know, don't do it after 10:00. All right? Go and enjoy the city's fireworks show. Uh, we put on quite a good show, and, uh, it takes a lot of effort from many volunteers, and the Beloit Jamesville Symphony Orchestra is putting on their show in the park. Uh, there's other activities that the Park District, uh, Eric, excuse me, the Leisure Services is putting on, uh, during that timeframe. So there's all kinds of things going on that you could enjoy on the Fourth of July that, uh, is much safer and creates a heck of a lot less racket than some of the fireworks that we hear. Now, the stuff that goes up and blows up, mortars, uh, bottle rockets, um, Roman candles, firecrackers, M80s, those types of things are all extremely dangerous. And I'd like to remind folks that about 2008, uh, we had a really horrible fireworks accident here in the city where a young girl about 14-years-old, uh, was holding a mortar in her hand. And, uh, loaded the mortar upside down, and the mortar shot through the bottom of the tube through her hand. So, um, those fireworks were sold legally in Wisconsin, um, to folks that have permits to, to hold them. Uh, we don't sell those permits in the city of Beloit. So if you go to a vendor somewhere else in the state or in another, another state to purchase fireworks and bringing them here into the city, that is illegal. Um, we don't permit those fireworks to be shot off here. So, if you do choose to shoot off some fireworks, uh, I have some safety tips for you. First, the only person that should be lighting the fireworks is an adult. Second, choose the right surface area. You don't want to burn, you don't want to s- use, shoot fireworks off on dry grass or on wood or anything like that. You want to be on a hard, level surface. Um, make sure you're distant from anything that can burn, including other people. Uh, the, your lawn chairs, um, uh, mulch. We have mulch fires all the time in the city of Beloit as a result of carelessly discarded cigarettes. Mulch can also start on fire as a result of fireworks. Um, have the proper personal protective equipment. Make sure that you have shoes on. Uh, one of the most common fireworks injuries in adults is, is burnt feet as a result of wearing sandals on the Fourth of July. So wear a shoe that has a closed toe if you're going to be, uh, using fireworks. Um, make sure that you have an extinguishing agent present, whether that's a, uh, some water, a bucket of water, or a hose that you can put on, something that if it does actually catch on fire, that's a good thing to have. And then wear clothing that is snug-fitting, uh, but covers all of your skin. Uh, the reason you don't want loose-fitting clothing is because of loose-fitting clothing could, uh, catch and hold and a spark that you would go unnoticed and it would catch on fire. Um, also, anyone using fireworks, please don't use alcohol. Don't allow children, uh, to use the firework. Sparklers, one of the most common injuries in children is, is something in the eye from a sparkler. And I want to point out that sparklers, although they are legal, are probably the most dangerous firework that is for sale on the market. Uh, those part, those, uh, wires can get as hot as, uh, 1600 degrees and can easily burn a small child in just a matter of moments. Uh, catch their clothing on fire, get stuck in their shoe, uh, or into a, uh, a sandal and burn their feet. So, very dangerous. Uh, sparklers are actually designed to be stuck in the ground, ignited while they're, while they're stuck in that, uh, that, um, medium, and then, uh, to be observed from afar, not to be carried around and swinging in the air like we see many times in our community parties. So, um, did I mention refrain from the use of alcohol?
Mm-hmm.
All right? Refrain from the use of alcohol while driving and while using fireworks. Um, you know, we deal with those, uh, types of issues all the time. And, uh, you know, we don't hate to hear the words, "Hold my beer and watch this." That would be a bad thing. All right? So, um, with those things said, uh, we do partner with our, we have three local vendors, uh, Phantom Fireworks, um, uh, Amusement Brokers, and, um, Cornelia Fireworks. We partner with them in a safety message in our local newspapers every year. Uh, they have worked with us over the years in fireworks enforcement and making sure that they're not selling to Beloit residents and not selling permits. Uh, that's something that we worked with on back in 2004 to eliminate those, uh, sales permits that the fireworks vendors were using. So, um, that's a good thing. And, um, we continue to partner with them and, and education, educating the folks that do buy fireworks in our community. Uh, but again, there are folks that go outside of the community to purchase fireworks. Um, I want to give folks the opportunity to, uh, file a complaint, um, or illegal sales of fireworks. All of our tent vendors that we go to, that we have in the city, are supposed to sell the fireworks that you can use in the city. Uh, they can't be purchased by minors. You have to be over 18-years-old. And, um, they can't sell fire trackers or bottle rockets or anything like that in a tent within the city of Beloit. If they are, please let us know right away. We'll send one of our inspectors out. We'll confiscate the fireworks. We'll issue a citation, um, and, uh, and do what's best for the community in making sure that our vendors are being reputable and safe. Uh, also, um, there have been in the past illegal sales where someone might be selling fireworks out of the back of a truck. If you see something, say something. Call the police department, uh, call the fire department. Uh, our non-emergency line for police and fire is 757-2244. If, uh, you have an emergency, if it's something that's ongoing right away, dial 911. We'll be out, uh, as soon as we are dispatched. So, uh, it's important to understand that we have, uh, many, many complaints through the fireworks season, and we have, uh, uh, a lot of things to deal with during that time with, uh, responding to just our normal calls for service. So bear with us through the fireworks season, uh, as, and we appreciate the public support in, uh, making sure that you're being a good neighbor, using things appropriately, being safe when you do it, and, um, uh, helping us out by being our eyes and ears when folks are doing it wrong. Do you have any questions with me?
Any questions? Ain't none. Thank you.
Pass it off to Chief.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, concur with all of your comments. And I think, obviously, folks know that the possession, not just lighting these fireworks off of anything that's not legal, which is a few of those things crawling around on the ground, um, will subject those fireworks to seizure by the police, uh, issuance of a citation. Parents can be responsible if their minor children are in possession of those illegal fireworks. And certainly, we have a lot of other things to do, both fire and police, and to be out policing and confiscating and issuing citations for illegal fireworks, because we would like everyone to enjoy their Fourth of July. And as Chief Liggett said, there are many legitimate fireworks shows that people can go to down at the rivers, Riverside and other locales that will allow you that opportunity to go and enjoy fireworks in an area that's safe to do so, um, without repercussions from law enforcement or any other issue. So we would really encourage folks to do that. Uh, one of the issues we wanted to bring to your attention that we have noticed over the past couple of years, um, that's very hazardous and dangerous to the public, involves oftentimes where we have some street closures, and we have what was planned as a nice family get-together and event, kind of turned into a collection of somebody's family and a whole bunch of people that just walked into a neighborhood or might live on that same block. And the closing of that street has then created a larger platform for the igniting of those larger fireworks, many of which are extremely dangerous to the people. All fireworks really are, are an improvised explosive device. They are a pipe bomb, not in a pipe. And there's small and there's big ones. And so the amount of damage that can be done can be anywhere from minor to great. And if you have a bag of small fireworks and they off, go off together, sympathetic explosion, that could take somebody's hand off very easily. So I think people are kind of immune from the thought that some of these things can be dangerous, and they look at it more as fun and don't really consider what's going on around them. Houses can start on fire from some of these larger fireworks. Uh, so what we've really been looking at is the street closure issue, and we would really ask folks that, um, do that and have these neighborhood parties to try and to the best they can police those events. Um, if they feel it's gotten out of hand, maybe that's a great idea for them to kind of self-regulate and end that party, uh, instead of letting it continue where they are maybe being flooded with other folks that they don't have any control of. And now we've got a large issue with the proliferation of these larger fireworks. And we do get a lot of complaints from people who are. They enjoy the fireworks, and now they want to come home and go to bed, uh, instead of experience, uh, another live show outside of their window. Uh, so I, you know, we really just encourage our neighborhoods, our citizens to be aware of this, kind of self-police that, make sure that you're not allowing that behavior to go on. We're going to be looking at that this year again and evaluating and reporting back to you. Uh, but I think that's an issue that's caused us some additional concern. And we'll be looking at some other options in terms of next year's 2018 street closures and fireworks complaints if we, um, are in a position where we can't get some voluntary compliance from the public, because there is a, a balance there to enjoyment and danger to others. So I'll just, uh, kind of throw that out there. We appreciate your attention. We appreciate our community support on that issue. I hope everyone enjoys their holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Council Blakely.
You're on.
On. Thank you. I just wanted to ask, um, both of the chiefs, what your best advice is for people in Beloit, a family in Beloit who wants to have a good time on the Fourth of July, but who wants to be able to look back on it as a happy event in which there were no injuries or no trouble with the police or, or fire department? What's your best advice?
Go to the fireworks at Riverside. Uh, have your event. I think having your event is an important thing. You know, you can have the family get-together, and you can enjoy either the legal fireworks in close proximity, or you can go down to the event and make that part of your family affair. Um, I, I just think we just have to be cautious about, sometimes these things get larger than we can control. It might even be beyond the family. Um, and so that's just an issue that we, that we wanted to raise and make people aware of. And, uh, we'll push it out on social media. I don't think we have a Beloit daily news person here today, but we'll, we'll push that along to them so they can help get that message out as well.
Thank you.
Did you have something more to add?
Council DeForest.
Yeah.
I just, I, I think it's important to understand that life in moderation is, is the key. And, um, uh, you know, we have folks that, uh, we show up for a fireworks complaint, and they've got a pickup truck full of illegal fireworks, and they're planning on shooting them for the next three or four days. You know, that's just, uh, it's about life in moderation. If we're going to enjoy the
If we're going to enjoy the holiday, I would strongly encourage folks to make a plan for your children and your family members to participate in activities that are equally fun and enjoying the freedoms that we have in this great country. For instance, at a fireworks show, one thing I failed to mention is that you cannot bring any fireworks to the fireworks show with the exception of a sparkler. And every year, sometimes the fireworks show in the parking lot is better than the one we're shooting at our own show. So we have to be very careful with those crowds of people, with all of the nylon blankets and things that, clothing that we're all wearing, all the synthetic clothing that we're wearing, that there could be a pretty disastrous result. So we always encourage, and we will post information and remind folks on Facebook that no fireworks are allowed at the public fireworks show. And then also, during the wait, you know, you come in a little bit early, you bring a picnic, you bring a bags game, you throw a frisbee, throw a baseball, there are so many other things that we can do to entertain ourselves, to create quality time with our families while we're waiting for the regular fireworks show to occur. So that would be my best practice.
Counselor DeForest.
I just want to make sure this is clear for the public, that we're going to be seriously talking about some consequences, repercussions for those street closures if the fireworks, illegal fireworks continue at those. And I want to make sure the public has a clear warning from us that, you know, we really need to see this year that folks are serious about not allowing those illegal fireworks at their street parties or block parties during the Fourth of July. And if it continues, that, you know, we'll have to take some action as a council, and we hate to, you know, take that privilege away, but it's something that we have to consider if it continues. I just want to make sure the public heard that warning from us. So.
Because I, yeah, because I agree with Counselor DeForest that we're looking at safety. And a lot of times on Fourth of July, I may walk to the nearest corner to watch the fireworks show, but then on my way back, it's, like you said, Chief, it's crazy out there sometimes. And I remember distinctly one year, it was so dry that people were doing fireworks in grass, catching on fire. And believe it or not, people were actually shooting fireworks at police cars and fire trucks. And to me, that's just totally unacceptable. So we do want the public to know that we're pushing safety. So if you're in the habit of having these block parties, okay, you're going to have to be a little bit more responsible and make sure that you're kind of controlling it, because we will be looking at that in the future. And if we're having the police or the fire department have to go back there multiple times in one night, you know, we're going to be looking at that when it comes time for the next year if you want to have that permit for that same block party. Because I think it's important, we don't have a lot of manpower on the streets. So we definitely don't want to hurt the manpower that we have out there. Because what people need to understand, if the police or fire are spending time doing fireworks checks, there could be a real emergency someplace else where we're kind of neglecting. So we, you know, we want the public to know that we're taking this serious. So.
Yeah, I didn't mention this before, but years ago, a friend of mine had an annual block party over here on the west side, and he was badly injured from fireworks, and it was something that they did every year. But one year, and this is, it's a space available, it's too tight a space, there's not enough, you don't have a good plan for exiting, you don't have a good safety plan, it's hard to plan safety around a, you know, 12-foot wide street that's got people all over it, and, you know, it's just that stark, and it's just not something normal people are equipped to deal with. And he did something he'd done years and years, every year. And this one time, he couldn't get far enough away, and something went a little off, and he almost lost his hand, you know, and he's still a good friend of mine. I know some of you people probably know him. But, you know, I don't think they ever had another block party after that. And that's, that's part of what we're talking about, is the block parties use an excuse to congregate and shoot off a lot of, a lot of volume. And that gets, the more you do, the more dangerous it gets, and it escalates very quickly. And having ridden my bike through town after many, many fireworks nights, we hear, you know, I've seen some really crazy things. And we hear the complaints from people that are disturbed by this activity. And we need to respond to those complaints, because they're at least twice as voluminous as the people doing the fireworks. And they deserve, you know, we deserve to act on public safety, and that's an important thing. So if the block parties are an issue, then we will have to deal with the block party in a little different way, too. Because we don't want to waste our manpower chasing fireworks. That's just not a good way to do things, and we don't have that kind of resources.
And oftentimes, we hear Counselor DeForest and a couple of the counselors, and myself included, saying a lot of these permit things, that people get our privilege. Kind of like the legalizing, they're privileged. And I just wish, and I'll yield to the city attorney, and I'm sure that we can't, but I wish that there be some way that if I take out a permit to have a block party, I realize I can't control everyone that shows up to that party, but that I can tell everyone in my family or my friends, "Hey, I'm responsible for this. I can be cited for this. I need you to help me look out for illegal fireworks. I need you to look out, we need to stop by 10 o'clock." Because I don't think if we get tough, if we don't get tough, it won't get any better. But I don't believe that that's the law, that we could do that.
But what that can do, I believe, and what your point is, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that if we're having issues in particular physical locations, then I think that will be a basis next year to determine whether or not that privilege should be extended again, regardless of who might be requesting the closure of the street. We may have to look at those physical locations, and if we're having continued repeated problems that are impeding public safety, then that would be the basis for perhaps not allowing it in the future.
Okay.
As far as this year goes, I wanted to conclude by saying, you know, what Chief Liggett started with is be a good neighbor. And I think that's what we need to emphasize with all of our citizens and everybody here. Be a good neighbor. Your neighbors have to go to work tomorrow. You have, we have things to do. We, you know, we need to look out for each other and be good neighbors to each other. And I think that's, that's an important message, and that's, you know, shouldn't be lost on everybody. And that, that's really what it's about. Thank you.
Think they get it.
I have one final clarifying comment. Just if you're an out-of-state resident that's visiting the city of Beloit with relatives, you do have the ability to purchase those fireworks that go up and blow up. But if you are doing that, if you are purchasing them, they are still illegal to use in the city of Beloit. You have the ability to, and the law allows you to transport them out of the city after you purchase them, but you can't keep them here or use them here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12.
12A is a resolution awarding the sale of approximately $1,730,000 in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2017A.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So last month, the city council, you guys approved the initial resolutions, which allowed us to begin the process to issue notes and bonds to help fund our capital improvement plan. Since then, we have worked a lot with our financial advisors, Ellers and Associates, also with Corals and Brady, who is our bond counsel, as well as held a rating call with S&amp;P, which is our rating agency. And we received and affirmed A-plus rating, which is great news for the city. And so at this point, I would just like to turn it over to Don Gunderson of Ellers and Associates, and she will walk you through the sale day report that you were handed out earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. You've received two documents today. One was prepared by your bond attorney, Corals and Brady. That was distributed by your clerk earlier electronically, I believe. And I just want to note that that resolution was prepared with today's sales results. So you had previously received a draft of that, and there would have been a lot of blanks in it. So this evening, when you take action, the resolution you'll be approving will be for the dollar amount of the resolution distributed today, and that is for $1,715,000. Your agenda is for $1,730,000. So just so you're aware, that you'll be approving the smaller amount. With that, the other document is the sale day report, as Mr. Miller mentioned. And this summarizes the results of our competitive note sale this morning for general obligation promissory notes, Series 2017A. We're pleased to report that we had six bidders from regional and national bidding on the issue, which is very, very positive and favorable for the competitive process. We, our low bidder is the winning bidder, as we refer to them, is Bach Financial Securities out of Milwaukee. The difference between our high bid and our low bid, with Bach's low bid at a TIC or true interest cost of 1.9526% compared to our high bid of 2.3227. So the difference between those two bids is about $42,000 in interest. So the benefit of being able to do this on a competitive basis allows you to accept that lower, lower interest rate. The results of this sale, there's a few things that are done on the competitive basis. Not only is the interest rate, the underwriters are bidding on interest rate, they're also bidding on their discount or their cost to place the funds. So as a result of that, we are able to downsize this issue because of the actual cost coming in a little bit lower, as well as a re-offering premium to being provided. We reduced the issue size by 15,000, hence the resolution that you received for the lower amount. There also is excess premiums that are deposited in your debt service fund for about $52,000. Those dollars are available to you to use to offset interest expense over the next couple of years on this issue. So with that being said, I'll just kind of walk you through the details of this report. The second page behind the summary, which tabulates kind of the results of the winning bid, is the bid tabulation. It's all of the underwriters that bid on your issue, and they're listed in order by the lowest bid to the highest bid. So Bach Financial Securities is listed as the first name on that list. To the right side of this schedule, you'll see that true interest rate. All the bids come in, and we do a tabulation of that TIC, as we refer to it, to determine who that winning bid is. So if you walk through this list, we have Bach out of Milwaukee, Bankers Bank out of Madison, Baird out of Milwaukee, Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Wells Fargo Bank out of Charlotte, North Carolina, and Bernard Securities out of Chicago. Those were the six bids that we received on your issue. On page three of this document, we provide for you a side-by-side comparison of our preliminary planning estimates, which we reviewed with you back at your meeting on May 1st, and the actual sales results. So we've identified all the projects that you wanted to finance. We have identified the additional $53,000 of premium that will go into your debt service fund. And then your cost of issuance, a few of those are less than our planning estimates. And the bottom line of that schedule is the net bond size, where you can see that we reduced the size by 15,000. On page four, we've kind of recapped for you the total difference between the principal and interest from our original planning estimates. This schedule is intended to reflect all your existing outstanding debt, the issuance of these two considerations this evening, plus projections for your future capital needs to show you an overall impact for levy purposes. But focusing on the final sales results, kind of in the middle section of this schedule, the bottom, we've boxed for you the differences between our planning and our actual results. Here you'll see that $15,000 reduction in principal, a little bit higher interest that is a result of the premium and interest on the issue. But because of that, funds going into debt service, we're able to reduce that. So there's an overall of about $55,000 savings from our original planning estimates on the promissory notes. The remaining schedules include that rating report, that S&amp;P rating report that Mr. Miller mentioned. So take the time to review that. It talks about the credit quality of the city and how S&amp;P had determined the A-plus rating. And then also, a schedule of where interest rates have been over the last 12 months. We are not at the low for the last 12-month period, but the rates have come down from the high towards the end of last year. So we actually are hitting the sale as rates have dropped off a little bit. So we're pleased with the results. And again, your consideration this evening will be on the $1,715,000 sizing.
Hey. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Pressel, is there a second?
Second.
Any, second by Blakely, any questions or comments? Hearing that as a roll call vote.
Gunderson?
Yes.
Blakely?
Yes.
DeForest?
Aye.
Aye.
Pressel?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a 6-0. Thank you. Item 12B, please.
12B is a resolution awarding the sale of approximately $5,645,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2017B.
Thank you.
Again, you were provided with an updated resolution this evening from your bond attorney for a dollar sizing of $5,425,000. That will be the resolution we'll be considering for the 2017B issue. The bonds, the distinction between the bonds and the notes, is the bonds are amortized over a longer period of time, therefore more major capital projects with a longer life expectancy. So they will hold a little higher interest rate because of the duration is for a longer term. Again, this morning, we took competitive bids on this issue. We had five bids, and the low bidder on this was Baird out of Milwaukee. Again, the difference between our high and our low bid, 2.6362 is the low bid, high bid 2.7792, a difference of 79,000 in interest over the period of the issue. Once again, because of the bidding process on this one, we were able to downsize the issue by 220,000. This issue was made up of financing not only new capital projects, but we've incorporated a refunding that gave us that flexibility to take that additional downsizing and apply it towards that refunding. So again, the bid tabulation, following that summary schedule, lists the bidders that we received, the breakout of the bidders. Baird out of Milwaukee is on the first page with their TIC on the far right of 2.63. I might note that if you look under Baird, there's a list of what is referred to as their syndicate. So not only was Baird, but every one of those underwriters participated in the purchase of your bonds. So there certainly is a vast majority. So I think that that just gives you an idea of the market interest in the Beloit issue. On the second page of that bid tabulation, Northland Securities, again, out of Minneapolis, Bach Financial out of Milwaukee, Wells Fargo, again, North Carolina, and Piper Jaffray out of Minneapolis, were the, make up the five bidders on this issue. Again, then on page four is the comparison side-by-side from our original planning estimates. Again, we had a re-offering premium here, which is dollars upfront. We were able to use those dollars to downsize the issue for the refunding, and that gave us, that plus a lower-than-projected issuance expenses allowed us to reduce the bond size by 220,000 to the 4 million, or, excuse me, 5,425,000. The page five of this document just breaks out the differences between the new money portion of the issue, which is about 3.2 million, and the refunding, which is benefiting your levy, your tax increment district number 10, your water utility, your sewer utility, and your stormwater utility. Those are all portions of that refunding from a 2008 issue. On page six of the document, again, it's the large pullout with the actual sales results. On the bottom summarizes that on this particular issue, we're issuing 220,000 less in principal and with an additional 13,000 less in interest cost at the end of the day. So the total P&amp;I savings is about, or reduction from estimate is about $233,000. And as I mentioned, there was a refunding of your 2008 GEO bonds. On page seven is kind of a summary of that. When you authorized us to proceed with the refinancing of this, we were estimating, in today's dollar, about 152,000 in savings. With the actual results of the sale, that savings is more like 225,000 or about, close to 9% present value benefit. The balance of this is similar to the last scheduled, it's the rating report and the last 12 months' interest rates. So I'm happy to answer any questions as well on this issue.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Motion by DeForest, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Anderson, and a question. Counselor Defor, Foreback, you're on.
Is it usual that you would put these for sale in the morning, and then tonight, you know?
Yeah, the typical process is, is the documents are prepared, an official statement, I believe, was sent to all of you, that was distributed out to the municipal market. The sales usually take place in the morning. The underwriters submit bids electronically. That information is tabulated. It's presented to your bond attorney to prepare all the legal documents. We bring them typically to the meeting, and once you act on it, then we notify the underwriter that you've accepted their bid. And then, tomorrow, they'd be out selling your bonds to individual investors.
Thank you.
Counselor Press.
I just want to say that thanks to you guys, and to Eric for staying on top of this and doing a good, another good presentation. Last year was amazing, and this year wasn't too bad. So, I mean, that's, it's really nice to see. I would, I, the city manager mentioned it in the pre-agenda review, the ratings direct document that's on the end of our, end of your packet here, has been updated to reflect current data that they have, and it's still, we're still A-plus rated. And for those who really want to get an idea of what is it like Beloit financially, I guess, as a financial, how are we viewed by the investment industry, I guess, that's a good document to read. It's a good document for our citizens to understand and read. It's not hard to read, it's very simple, and it's got a great deal of very good information. So, I wanted to reference that up here in public.
To correlate, it's much like an individual's credit rating. So, as we as individuals have a credit rating, which equates to the interest rates we pay, this is your credit rating in the credit market in terms of what investors are willing to, to pay you, or willing to charge you for interest when you borrow money.
And it's not hard to read. Credit rating is not exactly, nearly as accessible as this information. But it's, it was really nice to read. It's got some great data, and there are some great data points. And those who really care about Beloit, want to stay current, they should be reading those four pages. It's not hard. Thank you.
Here, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. And I love how that credit rating directly impacts the interest rates that we receive, which then translates into lower debt service for us. So, I know some residents are concerned about debt service, and our financial vitality is all tied up in that. So, and I just wanted to thank you and thank your firm for really constantly looking out for refunding opportunities for us where we can save money. It's been wonderful over the last several years, we've been able to save hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars with refunding, so thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. There'll be a roll call.
Anderson?
Aye.
Blakely?
Aye.
DeForest?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Preschel?
Aye.
Forbick?
Aye.
Pass is 6-0.
Thank you. Item 12C.
The council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1E.
Is there a motion? Motion by Press, is there a second? Second by Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, we are in closed session, and the council will not resume out here, correct?
Correct, we will not.
We will not resume out here, so those of you who were just looking for a moment to say, here's my time to go home, here's your time to go home. Okay? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I'll tee this about.
Oh, great.